All right, I don't see any changes to the agenda. So, first item of business is the Commissioner's report and invoices.
I have some invoices when you get to that point.
Okay. And I really didn't have any questions on the Commissioner's report, except the other report that I got. When I was looking at it, Treasure Valley, we paid them $500. Is that a monthly bill or is that a, do you know?
One month of $500?
No, there was, so there's French vanilla, coffee, cider, sugar, Swiss mist.
Yeah, they were asked by how chocolate, cocoa, cider, creamer.
Two departments were $400 of it, and the rest was water. So I just, when I seen the $500, so is it, is that a monthly bill? Is that a weekly bill? I mean, that's what I was kind of questioning.
I can pull, my guess would be, my guess would be, I hope, monthly. But I could pull that vendor, and we can look at a full review of it. And I can look by how much each department spends a month. The nice thing is, we count all of that to 424.90, so it's one item, one line item in every, in each department that pays it.
Okay.
So, I can pull that.
Well, I just, like I say, because I got the other report, I was looking at it, and it was $500, and I thought, well, how often do we?
Do we spend that?
Spend that.
And it depends on an apartment. I think honestly, there's only a couple of departments that buy those kinds of items. Probably Road and Bridge, because coffee is provided.
Road and Bridge.
By the Commissioner, or by Maintenance, I think, because of that courthouse.
Coffee and Dixie plates.
Paper plates.
Why would we buy them from?
A lot of departments buy.
Coffee.
Paper plate, oh, why would we buy?
Treasure Valley Coffee. I mean, I, I mean, we have an account at Costco.
Well, but not everybody can use Costco.
Well, yeah, they can.
If I don't, no.
They can come and get a card from us, right?
No, no. Only certain departments have Costco cards.
Yeah.
So only those departments can purchase otherwise, always have to buy and then get reimbursed.
And then reimbursed, okay.
Not everybody has that, but there's other options. I'm not sure if Treasure Valley is cheaper for plates, or if, we've got accounts at Jump State, we've got accounts at Hastings, we've got accounts of other places that you could potentially buy those items to.
Like I say, when I just saw a total of $500, and we've got Dixie plates, and creamer, and cider, and hot chocolate, I just questioned it. But that was the only thing I had. Anybody else?
Did you say Road and Bridge, we don't, they don't get coffee, or what?
No, they buy their own. So for the courthouse?
Well, it comes out of their budget.
It comes out of their budget, yeah.
Okay.
I don't, nobody buys their own.
No.
I mean, it's, the county pays for it.
Okay, good.
Some people bring their own, but.
Yeah.
I bring my own. Nope, county doesn't buy much.
Okay, let's go through, because she's got invoices also. So.
The easy one first. So we started a program last week after we met with the mayor, and we're going to do, basically, feedback with the city on the suicide campaign.
Yeah.
We're setting up a line item in county operations for that. And I wanted to make sure you were okay with the title, Suicide Prevention Campaign. Would you rather call it something else?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
How much is the?
This is the first one. That is for a website domain.
So?
And so that's going to be a domain referring to. And then, they bought some items, but we haven't seen those purchases yet.
Who's they?
Chantel and Tori.
Okay.
Are working together on that program.
Do they have a budget for where they want to go with this?
That's going to be the budget. We're going to have to use county op, they don't have a budget. I thought it was agreed that the board was going to allow them.
Yeah, Tori and I had talked about that, and I told him he could use up to $1,000, because we had some extra funds.
Yes.
So, that's why I was curious that it was coming out of county operations instead of, instead of our office.
We could take it out of the commission office if you.
Well, I'm happy to do it out of county operations.
Rather. I just figure this is, the whole point of when we set up county operations was for countywide functions.
Okay.
And the commission budget isn't.
That's fine. I was, we were just trying to move fast, and I'd identified some funds, just trying to be good, so.
And Christie came down and talked to me and said that you two had talked about where to pay those. And I told her I thought county operations was a little more appropriate with the mindset of what that department was for.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I'm just trying to catch up to speed, so, okay.
Now, the other, one more difficult claims. So, we'll save that one for last. We had a handful of invoices that the fair turned in. They went over budget, which I'll bring up in a little bit. To alleviate that, they were paying a few invoices out of the maintenance department, because that's for contract labor wise. I totally, that wasn't appropriate, because they were fair related. So I'm changing that coding. But one of the items was for an office container that they rented for... Basically, the month of August. The rental of the building was $650, but we had to pay $2,300 for delivery and pickup. I'm not sure what that was used for, but we could potentially pay that out of fair maintenance, depending on what the use was. But I wanted to bring that one to your attention.
You recollect anything on that?
I don't even have a phone.
That's a conversation we need to have with them. I mean, rent a building for $650, and it costs $2,300 to deliver it.
Scott says he knows what that was used for.
Oh, what was it used for?
So, in Yumquay's rider, he had a green room. There was a green, a green room.
Okay.
That was requested as part of that, so they brought in that portable office to be used as a green room for Yumquay. He satisfied his record.
So that definitely was fair related. So I'm going to change that coding to one to the fair. Also, we're paying liability insurance for the bucking bulls. I'm not sure if as part of the contract, if we're supposed to pay liability insurance, but I would ask that that, in the future, be billed from the vendor as part of the contract, rather than us reimbursing them specifically for the liability insurance. It just doesn't look good to me.
What was the question again?
The bucking bulls, we paid for their liability insurance.
Oh, why did we do that? Good question.
For the Rocky Mountain, my mind just went blank, sorry. For the annual conference that the fair goes to, Fair Boards go to, they have signed everybody up, well, not everybody, they've signed up nine people, including the maintenance person, to go to that event. I'm not sure if the board wants to review who they're sending, and then determine if that's appropriate or not. We've never sent the maintenance person in the past. I'm not sure why the maintenance person needs to go help make decisions on what entertainment's going to be part of the fair.
Is that all that conference is about?
Yeah. Right, Scott?
I've never been to a conference, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see why the maintenance guy has to go to that.
And last year, they talked about sending most people, just simply because it was a little difficult for so many individuals to get around. But if you want to pay the whole thing, we can pay the whole thing.
Well, I think we ought to ask him about it.
Okay. So maybe we turn that over to Commissioner Crowder to follow up on?
I'm good with that.
So I need to hold on to this packet and talk to him.
Do you want to talk about the line of terms, and then I'll get to the really?
Yeah, I just have a question. This one is, well, all of them depart tell are 90, except one says 180. Does it, is that two trips, or I mean?
I can ask for clarification on that.
See what I'm saying here? 90, 180, 90, 90. Just, the descriptions on why they're doing it, and what they're doing, on all of them. I mean, Fokto, Fokto, I mean, there's no, what are you doing? I don't.
I can get clarification on that, and then if it was two trips, by chance?
That's what, I'm guessing on the wood chips, it's probably a two tripper, but I don't know.
But I'd like to know what they're doing.
Well, this one, yeah.
I mean, it just says where they went, doesn't have any information.
Okay. I'll get clarification on that, and then go ahead and cut a check next Thursday, and if it's sufficient, we'll release the check. Will that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay. The last invoice I have of question is.
Excuse me a second, Christie, that's fair stuff, right?
Yeah.
Can I see, can I talk to him about that too?
Well, I won't, can I give you a copy?
Yeah.
And then that way, go ahead and process.
Yeah.
The last one I have involves legal. I have an invoice for Marsh Valley Electric, that we have told them they can't use Marsh Valley Electric, because Sheldon Marpus is a.
Owner?
He claims he is not a stakeholder anymore, but he still owns some of the equipment. To me, this is a conflict, only because if that business were to go under, he would either reap the benefit or a, obviously not a benefit, but he would feel that impact. I did speak with Alan, so hopefully he caught you up on what he said. He said it's a very thin line of if he truly owns it or not. The last time this happened, we only reimbursed for materials and not labor, because he was told he wasn't supposed to do it, and he did it again. I haven't seen an invoice for Marsh Valley Electric for quite some time.
We'll let Brian take a minute.
Well, really, there's, generally speaking, if there's a government official that's on a board, right, or like such as the commission, and they're getting paid, you can't enter into any contracts of which you're, you get a benefit of as a company owner. But there are a couple of exceptions, right? There's one if they have a remote interest. So if you have a remote interest, such as if you're less than a 1% owner of the corporation, if you're just a salaried, or an hourly employee, you get a fixed wage, you don't really get an owner share, things of that, they look at that, that it really doesn't count towards that. Or if you're not, if you're a non-compensated appointed public servant, you have to go through a process and procedure for the contract to be awarded. So, in this case, I know that was brought to Legal's attention. Alan looked at it a little bit as well, and the discussions he had with me, it might fit in the remote interest part of the exception, but definitely not as clean as he would like it, but.
It was a remote interest exception, is what Alan put?
Yes.
And that means?
That they have such a remote interest in the company where the contract is that.
So it sounds like in this case, he may own equipment that he leases to this company, which would make him a vendor of the company.
Right, and I, and Alan's been out of the office the last couple of days, because he's fallen a little under the weather, so I haven't had a chance to catch up with him. It seems like he's saying that he owns some equipment, and that's about it.
He says he's turned it over to his son.
Right.
I would like to have him come in and talk to us. I'd like to hold off on this bill, because by statute, we can't pay this bill if he has interest in this company.
If he hasn't gone through the process as an uncompensated appoint, or appointed public servant, or he doesn't have a remote interest, then we can't pay the invoice.
So, I'd like to have him come and talk to us personally, so that we know what it is, and, because if we can't pay it, we can't pay it. The other part about it is, his term on the board is passed, so is he still a member of the board? If he's not a member of the board, then we can do that, but we can't compensate him for mileage.
Looks like we got some catching up.
So that's why I would really like to have this individual come in and, let's, I mean, this is $6,000, so I'd like to have him here and let him voice, so that we hear it ourselves. Any comments about that?
No, I don't like the way it looks, so I'm good with that.
Okay. All right. A motion on Commissioner's report and invoices.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the Commissioner's report and invoices as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have salary rate approval forms. I don't have any problems with the salary rate approval forms, but I do with the internships.
Okay.
There's this agreement, takes effect on January 31st, 2019, and it's signed by Ken Bullock. Ken Bullock hasn't been here since January 2019.
Ken Bullock is working for ISU.
This one says facility, Bennett County.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
On the back.
Excuse me.
So, he has no authority to sign anything for Bennett County.
So, this has, this was an agreement, yeah, that was made back in 2019. So, it's kind of tricky with these social worker interns, because we have some interns that come through the ISU CPI, and then some that go through this department. And if you would like, I could get an updated agreement with them.
I would really like that to be updated.
Okay.
So that somebody presently representing Bennett County has a signature on that.
Okay, yeah, because this just held over since 2019, so, okay.
All right.
And this is just kind of a blanket one that we've been using for years.
Well, when I went through it, I didn't.
So, would you be comfortable in letting the, because this is an unpaid intern, allow them to do the work until we get that?
Well, that's, that's the one that come through before us last week, correct? These are the two that, was it Matt? No.
I'm trying to remember it.
Juvenile, over there, right?
Mm-hmm.
And they come and talk to us, and we agreed on it last week. So, they, we can move forward, we've just got to have the proper paperwork.
Okay, we can get that done.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the salary rate approval forms as presented.
Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resident of residency.
Does this have to go back there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Good shot. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the certificate, certificate of occupancy.
Residency.
Residency, excuse me, as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And next, we have an application, a credit application.
Yes, for Road Bridge. It's just an update, we've used that in the past, every once in a while, these guys just want new ones.
All right. A motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize signature on the credit application as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we'll start into our general work session. First discussion pertaining to ARPA funds with Bennett County elected officials.
Sounds good to me.
The elected officials can come on up to the table. You want to just go ahead and go through the first part of that, what was put in the budget?
As part of the clerk's recommendation, Christie, I was going to call killer. As part of the clerk's recommendation, it was recommended that the items that you see on this list are included as ARPA projects, and then through further discussion with the commission, there were some other items that we wanted to include as ARPA projects, but we were still waiting on costs. So a couple of those are like the Sixth Street Vacation, the East Entrance remodel, and then Event Center grandstands. So then what I did below that section is I just showed how much we received in ARPA funds, which was just over 17 million. The projects that we have already obligated and/or started or finished, which left a remaining $3.2 million. The two items that are highlighted in yellow are part of what's $10 million that can be used for general county operations, as opposed to within ARPA, the other projects have, the remaining 7 million have to be in expenditure category approved items. So they have to fall within whatever guidelines ARPA requires. So as you can see, we've got $10 million unobligated to use for general operations or projects, and then we have 1.2 million for expenditure category items that will need, up top, there might be some items within these, like the HVAC unit for 210,000. If the commission formally approves that, that can fall in one of the expenditure category items, but, you know, a mosquito truck probably won't. So, is that good enough?
Yeah.
I don't believe we've ever done a formal appropriation for the top items. So that was the reason I listed them out, was to make sure that.
The items listed through the budget?
Yeah.
That 2.3 million?
Yeah.
I thought it was pretty formal Tuesday when we okayed budget.
Well, we didn't.
Designate these specific projects.
Specifically, yes.
Yes. Come on up, Tori. Slush, go ahead.
I don't know if you want to formally do that, or if you want to open it to discussion for what, if the electeds have some other needs that maybe would take precedence.
Well, let's, let's have a discussion and see what, see what we can.
Let me ask you a quick question here. I thought we did approve some of these already, like the fares to $200,000, I thought that was approved with the budget.
It was.
I didn't have them outlined specifically in the ARPA budget.
Mm-hmm.
If you guys tell me that all of these projects are good and approved, then I can take that as, yes, they are. I just wanted to err on the side of very detailed, transparent commission.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only one that stood out to me, that I remember discussing, and so I thought that was already approved.
I, all of these.
But honestly, I don't know all of these, that we said, yeah, we're going to put ARPA to this.
These 2.3 million, when we did the clerk's recommendation, we outlined the e-pole books, the corner cooler, the routing upgrade, the road bridge equipment, the building projects for the jail, the barns for Fair Board. We did the event center, but those included two Rangers that we've already purchased. So that's changed, but then we also added a tractor that was not originally on the clerk's list. The windows we did, and the truck we did. And then we also talked about the assessor projects, juvenile probation and historical. But, again, I was erring on the side of absolute transparency.
So they are budgeted, but just, we didn't specifically say these items.
I have.
We had, put it in the budget to make sure that we could spend it, but we did talk about all these projects.
Okay, so I just, I mean, maybe my recollection is wrong, I thought we had already said that some of them were going to be ARPA budget, and I couldn't tell you if I'm correct.
We actually said all of these were going to be ARPA.
Off at the side on our budget sheet, they were there, as ARPA funds.
And again, if you tell me this 2.3 million is good to go, then I will count them as approved as part of the budget that we passed on Tuesday.
And it's like the one that, for the ambulance district, that money, that I said we need to budget it, but I'm not putting the project on there specifically. So, any comments, Jeff?
No, I, again, I think we talked about this enough through the budget, that 2.3, I'm okay if we move forward with that as approval with the budget yesterday, or Tuesday.
Do you want to mention about going independent on the forensic pathologist, or not ISU? Do you want to talk about that at all?
Yeah, we'll talk about that as we go through this.
Okay.
We'll get there.
Okay. John, any comments?
Not from what I've heard.
Okay. Elected officials, questions, comments?
I believe so.
Okay. I'm back to you.
I guess we'll give everybody an update. The forensic pathology program, project is starting to shape up, and we're getting to a point now where I feel like we have some realistic costs. We have moved the project off of ISU's campus, and we're going to build it on the land that we have behind the jail, the eight acres we have up there behind the jail. And we're looking at a couple of things to help with that. Brayden and I met with an organ donor company in Salt Lake on Monday. They're interested in participating with the project, in potentially some initial building funds, and some ongoing funds. So the cost for that project right now is at about $3.5 million. And so I would be willing to reduce the amount that we have budgeted or set aside from seven down to three and a half at this point in time. And we'll have, I would expect to have a more firm proposal within the next 45 days, 30, 30 to 45 days, because we'll hear from the company in Salt Lake, hopefully by the middle of September, what they're willing to do. And then we'll also have some better construction costs, potential construction costs by the end of September, I think, so.
Yeah, same.
And that 3.5 million is for everything to start, so.
Will ISU have any involvement with that?
Yes, ISU will still be involved. We had a meeting with President Saturday, two weeks ago, and still outlined their involvement, what we expect from them, and what they expect from us, so that part is still in, in play. We just moved it to our own facility, is the only thing. And by doing that, we're able to cut the costs dramatically, as you've seen.
I think the location makes sense.
Yeah.
Jeff went to a couple of meetings out of state, and some of the experts have said, you don't build something on somebody else's property. And that's kind of what we felt with, with ISU. We didn't feel like we would get our bang out of our butt for. These other projects, the Sixth Street Vacation, I, we own the Sixth Street now. That is Bennett County property, that has been vacated by the, by the city. So, we're looking at a different way to have flow of traffic, change things there, make it better for pedestrians going back and forth. The East Entrance remodel. What was going on there? I can't.
The East Entrance model, remodel?
There was $20,000 approved to get.
Drawings.
Drawings.
Oh.
And I think those will come back, but no formal updates have been made.
And that was to better barricade those windows and stuff from the street. And then the event grandstands redo the seating. Those wooden planks have been there for a long time, and so that was what we was looking at on that, and I would really like that to. And so that was what we was looking at on that, and I would really like that to get some attention. We have a lot of events up there, and I'd like to do something there. We have gone out and looked at a few buildings of trying to purchase or do something. I have great concern about the parking lot over here. We have an agreement with the LDS Church right now for thirty parking spots, and we have more than thirty parking spots that we utilize over there in the past. They have had some discussions for whether they would renew contracts or not, if we don't have parking area around here somewhere. And that's why the conversation of tearing down the building across the street there, the annex, and doing something, turning that into our parking lot and doing something else. It's a discussion that we have, and we have had, but I think as we have funds that may be available, I think that we need to have a serious discussion about that. Because, like I say, right now, we are very, very limited on our parking. Thoughts, comments?
Who negotiates the parking contract with these guys over here?
I don't know who did.
I think it was Carol last time.
Yeah.
Do you think we could negotiate like a longer-term agreement? And that would at least give us some breathing room?
Well, we could have that conversation with them. But, yeah. Still comes down to an area that we don't own.
Yeah.
And just like any other contract, there's usually an out, and I'd hate to be surprised.
I just like to, when we're talking about spending large amounts of money, I like to have time to really evaluate different options, and this, I think, would give us a little bit more breathing room.
Well, with ARPA funds, our deadline is projects by the end of next year.
And calendar year, December twenty-four.
And then spent by twenty-five, the end of twenty-five.
December twenty-nine or twenty-six.
So, I mean, we have time, but we have limited time too in projects that we pick for ARPA funds. So what I would ask is, if you think about it, submit whatever thoughts you have to Brayden, if you have projects that you really feel positive about, so we can have further, a little more further discussion. Like I say, if these funds are available, that Jeff just talked about and stuff, it opens some things up.
Well, if we unobligate the three point five million, and then take away the two point four that we've got up here, that gives us four point three back to spend still. So we might want to get going on it.
Yeah. It's been a drawn-out process to move on this, but we want to make the right choices too, that's going to have some effect down the road.
And we might have a little bit more ARPA money. We do have a couple other, like in capital acquisitions, we have four hundred and twenty-five thousand budgeted. I need to get with Dan, but I think we've only got about a hundred and ten in projects identified. So that leaves us about three hundred thousand that we could potentially do some of these other projects, depending on what benefits where for reporting purposes. So we could have a little bit more than the four point three, if there's needs out there. Definitely the HVAC, we wouldn't leave in ARPA, but if there's some small items that...
Well, this isn't your Christmas wish list, but this is just, if there's things that you feel like we could utilize and better the county, we need to know about that.
Where that parking lot's been utilized by Bannock County for so long, would they be open to the option of buying a section of it?
No.
No.
They're filled up. When they have meetings over here at the church, they share right now with buddies, but I don't think that they would entertain the idea of selling. But that's, if we can get a hold of the leadership and see about a meeting and have a discussion.
To me, if we've already been using it for so long, and it's been allowed, and they've leased it or whatever, either maybe they would be willing to look at doing something like that, and then we're not any money trying to tear down and rebuild if we already have the parking area, that they would just give us the option of buying a section.
Yeah. I don't know. We could ask that question, but in dealing with the LDS Church in the past, they generally don't negotiate with their lands. So, okay?
I'd like to ask Commissioner Huff a question. On this three point five million, you're comfortable coming down to that number with contingency built in, that there's very little likelihood we'd exceed that?
Yes, I feel pretty good about that number today.
All right. Would you like a motion right now on what we have set aside on the top half of the...
Yes, no. Some of these items, if we could move them to the capital acquisitions, that would make my reporting a little bit easier, so like the office remodel for juvenile probation, if we commit that, that way I don't have a bunch of little invoices that I have to report.
Okay. What's your deadline for reporting?
I have to report quarterly.
So is that September?
On any activity that's occurred. Well, it's only for expenses made.
My thinking is, if these guys have some other ideas for projects, that we can come together and readjust that list with other things.
That would be ideal, because then we would be obligating FI twenty-four monies appropriately in the budget, so if we could do that the middle to end of September, that'd be perfect. And then as projects come in, we can shift what we want to go to capital acquisitions versus ARPA.
The other deal, I just underwayed a little bit into actually designating. I'm still concerned about the jail, what our costs are going to be, what our share is going to be on some of that.
I did put four hundred and fifty in for the jail boiler project, and pilled.
And pilled?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're covered.
That four fifty should be, well, the boiler, we might have to pay for, but ICRAP will reimburse us. We're still kind of waiting on that, but there might be some other parts of the project that we may have to pay. We've already paid ninety-nine thousand. I don't know if everything else will be covered, but just in case we threw that four fifty in.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're covered on that project too. That's got to get completed.
And that I do have put in there.
Okay.
That's above and beyond what's on here. But I like the delay of waiting, because there could be some items that we could easier report through ARPA and other items that we could shift to other locations, so.
Okay.
Do you have a timeline when you need projects, requested projects?
Do you want to remit the end of...
If you send them into Brayden in the next two to three weeks, and then we could meet in a month.
Even if we meet the first of October, we could allocate the projects at that time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If you want. And I just wanted to recognize Commissioner...
Okay, we're still on the record, and Commissioner Crowder is talking.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize Commissioner Huff for all the work he has done on this forensic pathology lab. I know he put a lot of time and effort into getting these numbers down and making this more economically feasible, so thanks for your efforts on that.
All right. Thank you. So, Dan, I'm going to move you up on the agenda a little bit.
Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you today. My name's Dan Garen. I'm the regional supervisor of Idaho Fish and Game here in our Pocatello office, and our region encompasses Bannock County and six other counties that we generally work in. Had an opportunity to meet with Commissioner Crowder about a month ago. He's the liaison between the commission and the Fish and Game. We both thought it might be valuable to spend some time talking about the activities that we do in Bannock County to help figure out where we can help each other meet objectives that we share. I've got a quick-fire list of activities we're going to, that we've got going on here in the county, and hopefully some time at the end to answer any questions you guys might have. I would offer, if you have questions as we go through this, certainly feel free to speak up and ask them as well. In attendance with me today, I've also got Becky Johnson in the back row. She's the head of our technical services program. Becky, you can come on up and join us if you like. And that's actually the first program that I want to talk about. So this program provides professional expertise and data to requesting parties such as the county or other organizations on land use decisions that can impact wildlife populations. Can include comments on energy development, road issues, urban development, recreation, or many of the other activities that have an impact on the resources that Fish and Game manages. The intent of this program is to not, not to stop development, but to make sure that development occurs in a way that reduces impacts to wildlife and, if possible, even eliminates those impacts. So Becky's been working with the county on land use and development ordinance revisions. We also receive hundreds of calls each year from Bannock County public asking for assistance with nuisance wildlife and wildlife conflicts. We also provide education and guidance on removal of animals when they serve as a public safety concern. There are instances where moose in particular wander into places where we see conflict, and an aggressive moose can be a problem for a lot of reasons. We also respond to many general questions about wildlife, how to improve private properties for wildlife, for hunting opportunities, and field many questions about hunting opportunities in Bannock County. We've got another program that deals with outreach communications and volunteers. This program provides or produces content for news outlets, IDFG outreach, and also heads up a volunteer program for the region. Volunteers basically have two categories. We've got general volunteer opportunities for whoever's interested. We also have a more trained master naturalist. These are specialized volunteers that can sometimes lend some technical expertise to us and our programs. We spend a lot of time informing and involving the public in the work we do. We see that as a benefit to the residents of Bannock County and across the state, and it helps increase the appreciation for the wildlife that we all value. The communications program has worked with the Bannock County Extension Service through the University of Idaho to put on fishing clinics within the, with youth from the area. These clinics, we basically teach about fish biology, fish behavior, fishing techniques, how you catch fish, and then we take them out to Bannock Reservoir and allow them to fish for no charge, no licenses required for that, and helps get folks involved in that aspect of what it is we do. We've also got a wildlife program that's broken into two components. There's a habitat component and a populations component. The habitat side is actively involved in land management and improvement activities across the county, and they manage a public recreation area on the Portnife Wildlife Management Area outside of Incom, as well as the Edson Victor Nature Area, which are two of our five WMAs that we manage here in our region. They also work closely with partner agencies and private landowners on conservation easements of wildlife habitat, improvement activities on the private lands. We also have a stock pheasant program on the Portnife WMA, whether it's wildlife stocking or fish stocking, when the habitat's not capable of supporting natural production, we can come in and provide opportunities with our hatchery program, and that's what that pheasant program at Portnife is. On the wildlife population side, these, this program works to improve wildlife populations across the region. They mainly work with animals, which really means we work with people a lot, because the two are intertwined, and that's different than the habitat-based approach of the habitat program. Wanted to give you a quick update on big game herds. Last winter was unprecedented in what we've seen for winters in a long, long time, and that was particularly hard on mule deer this year. Down in the southeastern portion of our region, we estimated mule deer survival or mortality at very high. We lost about ninety percent of our fawns down in that part of the world, and about sixty percent, a little bit less than sixty percent of the adult population. In Bannock County, it was a little bit better. We don't have radio collared animals on in Bannock County this year. That's how we measure mortality. But we still suspect that there was about an eighty percent loss on our fawn crop, but the adults survived at a better rate. Anyway, you look at it, it's going to be a hard year for mule deer and mule deer hunters, and I thought that would be of interest to you guys.
They didn't survive behind my house, I'll put you...
They did not.
I had a lot of dead deer in my backyard.
Yeah, it was unlike anything that we've seen in a long, long time. So it started early, you know, usually the snow doesn't stick until December. It started a full month early, and it lasted longer than usual, and that causes animals to burn through their fat reserves faster, and it's essentially like running out of gas in your car, and we didn't make it till spring, so before the fat reserves were gone. Another thing we've been working on is a developing issue to the north of us with an elk population that chose to spend the winter hopping back and forth across Highway fifteen. We're working with Idaho Transportation Department and the Shoshone-Bannock Tribe to figure out what those elk are doing. We radio collared thirty-plus elk out there to figure out where they're going and how we can put some pressure on them. We're also working on a fencing project along the east side of the highway there that would keep elk off of the highway and improve human safety there, which was significantly at risk through the winter. We also do a lot of work with moose statewide. We put a lot of collars out on moose to look at survival of those critters, and in partnership with the Forest Service, we're also working on some riparian restoration up in the upper ends of the Mink Creek drainage. Switching gears to fisheries, much like the wildlife program, fisheries staff work to improve fish populations for anglers, and that involves a lot of work with our public as well. Far as Bannock County goes, we have several areas where we stock on an annual basis to provide that recreational opportunity that wouldn't be there without those stocking programs. We put about six thousand rainbow trout in the Wellness Complex each year. Same for Edson Victor, we put about six thousand rainbow trout in that fishery annually. We put about two hundred and thirty-five thousand trout in American Falls Reservoir, and about six thousand trout in the Portnife River, kind of scattered around at different locations, all geared at creating recreational fishing opportunities for folks. Aside from that, staff also maintain access sites, including outhouses on the Portnife Wellness Center, Edson Victor Pond, Crane Creek, Hawkins Reservoir, and three access sites on the Portnife River. And we work with the City of Pocatello to maintain three of their access sites at city parks adjacent to the Portnife River. From the enforcement program, these folks generally work to gain compliance with IDFG rules and regulations, and to provide safe recreation across the region and the county. Staff often work with landowners in the county to assist with trespass issues, particularly during the fall. It seems to be the peak of trespass activities, as people see deer in places they don't have permission for and go out and pursue those. We act as the liaison between landowners and the prosecuting attorney's office and help curb some of that overzealous pursuit of critters on the private lands. Last winter, we worked with the City of Chubak and landowners to manage the large elk herd down on Two and a Half Mile Road, similar to the elk herd on Highway fifteen. We had some elk in some new areas, largely because of the amount of snow that was in traditional winter ranges and had pushed those elk around. traditional winter ranges and had pushed those elk around and created some safety issues. So that's really the quick overview of some of the work we do in and around the county. I would offer up the opportunity, if any of this, I know it was quick and fast, if any of that was particularly interesting to you, reach out. We'd be glad to give you more in-depth information. Also, would offer up the opportunity, come out and volunteer with us and get in on some of the activities, if it's a pheasant stocking or a trout stocking or deer capture or something like that, if it's of interest to you. Reach out, we'd love to have you out there and show you what we do. So, I'll stand for questions if you have any.
Well, anytime you do anything up at the Wellness Complex, we'd like to. No, I was up there the one day when they stocked the fish. It was pretty interesting. The birds of prey up in that area were more interested than the fishermen, I think.
Yep, we get that a little bit.
Speaking of the Wellness Complex, would it be possible to work out a deal with you guys for some of the visiting acts that we have to kind of give them a day pass or whatever to fish up there where they don't have to have a license?
We could certainly talk about that. We don't have the ability to give free licenses, but we do have the ability to do fishing clinics and classes that fall under an umbrella of the...
We could do that.
The free pass.
So what he's talking about is performers that come and want to walk out the back door and throw a line in there, and they don't think about a license at the time, so...
Yeah, so if you have a specific situation, we can't give them blanket...
Correct.
Blanket permission, but if you have specific situations, we can work with you and figure out a way to make something happen.
Great. And then just to follow up, question to the issue with the mule deer. How are you going to manage the hunts over the next couple of years to compensate for the losses that we had?
So, when you're trying to rebuild a mule deer herd, and that's where we're at, we're in the rebuild mode, the number-one thing you've got to do is protect the females. They produce all the next year's crop comes out of them. And so, coming into this winter, before we had the winter snowstorms, we were at a point where we could start increasing our harvest opportunity on does. So we wheeled all that back as we saw the winter progress. We've eliminated all doe hunting across the region, even for archery hunters, really trying to put our emphasis on protecting those does in combination with some of the habitat work that we do to restore and improve range conditions for those animals so that they can rebound at a faster rate.
The last question I have is, I remember in the 80s, the last time we had a winter like this and had the deer dying due to starvation as such, and so have you guys adjusted your feeding protocols based on this last year? I know typically the protocol is we don't feed unless it's an absolute have-to, but have you adjusted that at all based on that?
Yeah, that's a great question. There is a, in statute, there are criteria that have to be met for us to implement a winter feed program. In the past, prior to this year, we concentrated food in barrels that would keep the food dry. What we find is that older does, more aggressive deer tend to monopolize those resources and actually will kick their own fawns and other deer off. And so you end up with that approach, preserving older deer and not the younger deer that you really need to get. So this year, what we did was lay out feed lines on a daily basis, and that allowed all the deer to come in and feed as opposed to just the more aggressive ones in the population. Moving forward, we think that's a better way to go. When winter criteria are met, we do intend to feed again. We were probably, again, looking backwards, we waited until those criteria were met before we implemented feed, and I think that moving forward, we can look at how winter is progressing. There's some metrics in there that I think that we can kind of get a good feel for if trends continue, it's going to happen, and the criteria are going to get tripped and maybe start a little bit more of a proactive program should we get into that situation again.
Are those metrics statutorily dictated or are those internally dictated?
They are statutorily dictated, but we help develop them, so they're fairly accurate on when and where, you know, when and where you're going to hit the point where it is imminent, you do have troubles, and you've got to interact.
Great, thank you.
Yep, you bet.
I'd just like to thank you for coming in. Thank you for all the work you and your staff do. I really appreciate this update.
You bet. Glad to be here, and like I say, we're a resource to help the county and developers and your constituents. Your constituents are our customers, and so we share that. And so if there's ways that we can help you out, we're more than happy to do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like a discussion regarding vandalism at the event center.
Scott Crowder, Event Director, Business Manager.
Tony Monahan, Bannock County Sheriff.
Buddy Robina, Public Works Assistant Director.
Well, we've had a few things happen up there at the event center. Different age groups, different, some with automobiles, some with just vandalisms and stuff. John?
Yeah, so I wanted to have this meeting so we could discuss, you know, nipping this in the bud. You know, I've been hearing repeatedly about different criminal activities going on up there, everything from drug deals to people racing to the parking lot, doing their spinning around in the cars. People complained about feeling endangered while they're up there. And so I really just want to hear from the people here who have some ability to maybe affect this and what kind of things we might be able to do about this to put it into some of these problems.
Okay, so I can address a few of those areas. So this is my third season up there. Every year, we do have vandalism that occurs. I think it's standard for most parks and wrecked apartments, most complexes. I reached out to Pocatello and Chubak to find out kind of where they're sitting this year. Both have reported similar acts of vandalism in their facilities. Pocatello stated that theirs, they have seen an uptick this year as we have. For some reason, like kids are destroying our restrooms more than usual. This year, we've had, you know, over 40 soap dispensers broken and 40. We've had a lot of, 50 toilet paper dispensers broken. We've gone through five cases of toilet paper. There's just been, the toilet paper of the restrooms thrown in the toilets, the seat covers. We've had four toilets that have been destroyed this year with fireworks, firecrackers, whatever. Four mirrors, four stall doors that have been ripped apart. Recently, somebody jammed a screwdriver in one of our door locks. People shot out or broke out the windows in some of our restroom facilities, and we had one of our light fixtures that was torn off of the ceiling the other day, which resulted in shorting out and frying our sensors in there as well. So just in the actual cost of goods, not in the labor to fix it, we're sitting at about $10,000. The labor is higher because in some cases, we have to bring in plumbers or electricians to fix that stuff, and in other cases, our staff do it.
Scott, the majority of this has happened since the Fourth of July, hasn't it?
No, it's happened pretty progressively, but it did, we hit about, maybe three weeks before school started, we had, and I think we have identified some of the perpetrators, but we had a group of, I would say probably 12 to 15-year-old kids run through, and they did a lot of damage in a short period of time, specifically to their restrooms. We have, and I've seen some of these things the Commissioner Crowder has addressed, you know, when we're up there closing up the complex at night in the parking lot, people come up and will use illicit drugs up there, and we kick them out of the complex. We caught a group of juveniles yesterday smoking marijuana in our bathrooms. We turned them over to the Sheriff's Department. The hardest thing about the vandalism stuff that occurs up there is really, it does, it can rise above just a nuisance and it can really, starts teetering on this public safety aspect, and that's one of the reasons I believe that you guys funded the security position for us moving forward. The funding takes place in October, and Tony and I have talked a little bit about, or Sheriff Monahan and I have talked a little bit about having his staff come and lock the facilities, including the restrooms, you know, at 10 o'clock at night. Due to the damages we've had recently, we've started locking the restrooms, but that comes at a pretty big price to the community. We've had a handful of complaints from people that have been using the facility that there haven't been restrooms available for them to access. In some of the cases, those restrooms were locked because they are inoperable due to the damage that's been done. Other cases, we lock the restrooms to prevent vandalism. Some of the acts of vandalism that we've seen have occurred. We had some kids kick the hand dryers. We went in and cleaned the restrooms at 11 o'clock, had staff members go in to use the restroom at noon, and they had been kicked in that meantime. Somebody had gone in right in the middle of the day. A lot of the vandalism that's occurring is happening in daytime hours. So that's a tough one to try to lock people out of that. Really, it's just a presence, and our staff is aware of the people that we feel we need to kind of keep an eye on. We have changed some of our cameras that are currently on the complex. Instead of watching more broad areas of the complex, we've turned them to give us a better perspective of these high liability areas. So, when it comes to the restroom specifically, and I'm going to try to take these in a few different chunks, Commissioner, but when it comes to the restroom specifically, I personally really struggle with locking them because it really impacts a lot of people. And some of the stories that people share with us is kind of crazy of young kids, you know, not being able to use the restrooms, not using those facilities, and having some issues. That stuff bothers me a lot. And so, my thought is, is we continue to work with the Sheriff's Office to issue keys for the deputies to lock, and then we look at the, you know, the cost, and then we have funding next year to do that stuff, but we just look at whatever that cost may be for the remainder of this year. So that is something I think that we do to allow the restrooms to be open during kind of the daylight hours and then lock them down once the complex kind of closes down. We have a, and we have had the issue with, and now that school's back in session, kids love spinning donuts in our parking lots, and it happens a lot in our dirt parking lots, in our gravel parking lots. We have three large gravel parking lots. In the main complex of the Wellness Complex, people drive fast in there. They race up and down those things. We have looked at a bunch of different options for deterring speed, including temporary speed bumps, which everybody that I've talked to about that says that's a horrible option to go with because they just get blown out and they end up damaging your concrete or your asphalt. Better option is to look at a permanent solution, which is just to put in some permanent speed bumps. A couple of years ago, I did have Roden Bridge out. We walked through the parking lot and looked at it. It's a pretty big undertaking to put the speed bumps in there because that parking lot's so long. And so, but I think that eventually, that's just going to be the best option. One of the issues that a lot of kids are doing now is the drifting, and so in between the islands where we would put the parking lots, they still just spin around there as much as possible. That stuff will be deterred with the security that we have coming up there in the, you know, in the coming months. That's going to be one of the biggest deterrents. But the kids know too, you know, we see them on cameras. The sheriff's deputies will come up when there's a group of them sitting up there. They'll talk to them, the kids will drive off, the sheriff's office drives off. Five minutes later, the kids come back and do what they've been doing. So it really is a continued presence to try to have a long-term deterrent there. Some of the things that we do is we try to restrict access to certain parts. We lock some gates to kind of try to funnel people in. We have had our locks broken and cut this year as people just really want to, they really want to get after it. I have personally tried to, and I've done this for the last several years, is I've engaged people that are involved in those activities, to try to tell them, hey, look, please stop doing that, you know, this causes a danger. This last year, we had a few people, when they saw us just approaching, run, you know. In one case, the car took off across our walking path, which causes a pretty big risk to anybody that just may happen to be coming down the walking path. And then this year, we stopped a couple of vehicles, and one of them peeled out nearly hitting me and one of my staff members in the process. So, there's a few things that we can do, you know, the, I think that, you know, if we're looking at really reducing speeds through the parking lot, then speed bumps is the best option. And out of the speed bump options that are available, permanent speed bumps are the way to go. As a matter of fact, not just speed bumps, they kind of have a longer, flatter, like a speed hump is what they're called.
Got two of them in Incom.
Yeah.
Both in Incom.
Yeah. We do have to take into consideration water drainage and the flow up there. We do get a lot of water that flows down the hills through the complex, and so we just have to put those away that helps reduce the speed but does not create greater problems for us in the future. And again, I think that locking the complex, the agreement that Tony and I and his team have talked about is that they would lock the complex at night. When we have, during the summer, the full-time staff member that would be up there, that would be their responsibility would be to lock it and kick people out, and then our staff would come in the morning and unlock that. So we'll take care of unlocking, and then we'll let these guys lock up at night because there is risk in kicking people out of the complex. So, that's kind of a report...
Put some signage there.
Yeah.
Tell people what the hours are of the park.
And we currently have signage up there that says it's from dusk until 7:00 a.m., but the park gets used. Oh my gosh, I drove by this morning at 6:00 a.m., and there was the ROTC was out there doing drills in the parking lot. It is used, it is just used all times of the day by many people. And so, and we have a lot of people that really support what we do, and they have, you know, I stopped and talked with one of the ladies that uses our complex all the time. She's a great supporter of ours in person and on social media. Sometimes she goes to our defense, which is great, but she did ask me, she's like, you've got to do something about my bathrooms. They just are getting torn up all the time. And so, the bathrooms is a really tough one because we obviously will never be able to put cameras in bathrooms. And even in the case like yesterday, our staff walked in and found some kids that smelled like they were hotboxing one of our restrooms. We still can't prove that it was them that were smoking in the restroom, so, you know, but luckily for us, they were thrown from school, and so that is what we got them for. And then in that case, I do ban them from the complex.
So, with the people that we catch, are we citing them? Are we prosecuting them? I mean, it's got bad enough, like I say, $10,000 in a short period of time. We've got to do something.
It really depends. I mean, it depends on when this happened, and if it happened, well, it's like we're talking about seeing people on video cameras. Well, that's a whole different story than going to find that person and then actually charging somebody, because now it's a little more difficult for us to charge for misdemeanors because unless it happens in our presence, we can't really charge anything. That's just...
You can charge, you just can't arrest.
We can't arrest. I'm going to kill our frog, we just can't arrest. But, it's a little more complicated when our presence isn't there all the time. But yeah, when we have an opportunity to cite, we cite them, and normally, it's juveniles, so it goes down a whole different process through the juvenile system. So, we've talked about it with Crowder here, and we've talked about security. I mean, is it a security? Do you hire a security team that does this kind of stuff? But then, really, if you have a security team, they're still going to have to call us to come do anything with any teeth in it, you know, because they won't have any power to arrest, they don't have any power to really, other than detain somebody and kick somebody out. If something happens beyond that, then it becomes our problem, even with the security personnel. And then if we are enforcing, charging people, it has to be a state statute. I know we have rules, or I know in the past, we've talked about putting rules up there and enforcing rules up there. Well, for us to enforce rules that go through the court system, that doesn't happen. It's kind of like a city ordinance in these small towns, you know, unless they have, they want us to enforce ordinances, but there's really no teeth in them until they have somebody to prosecute them. So, unless you have ordinances up there that the county creates, that's something we could enforce. unless you have ordinances up there that the county creates, that's something we could enforce. Working with the prosecutor's office, of course, to make sure those ordinance are legal and have some penalties to them. But anything that we enforce up there has to be a state statute.
Sounds like a lot of them are violations of state code, like reckless driving.
Right.
Wise to highways and public or private roadways that are open to the public. So that would fit. And trespassing and vandalism are all viable state charges. And then if the county wanted some specific regulations for that, I mean, you could pass an ordinance. And that could be a misdemeanor that the county could enforce, but that'd have to be, you know.
And that'd be dog with off-leash and that kind of stuff. That'd be county ordinance type deal.
Yeah. Whatever the, well, we have a state ordinance on dogs of large.
Okay.
But if you want to, you know, create stricter, you know, some different, other than state code, you'd have to pass an ordinance that, that then the county could enforce.
Okay. If we have these ordinances, does that mean they could arrest?
No.
What's stopping you from arresting? What is this rule about doing something happening in your presence? What's that all about?
You want to explain that?
And when did that come about?
You want to explain that?
Five years ago.
Yeah.
The Supreme Court in Idaho said that if a misdemeanor does not occur in the presence of law enforcement, you cannot arrest on it. You can track them down and give them a citation and require them to appear, but you can't take them to the Houskow.
Yeah.
If it occurs in their presence, you know, Tony's sitting up there and sees someone commit, you know, an act of vandalism, he can put the cuffs on. But if it happens outside the presence of law enforcement, you have to issue a citation.
And so is that something we need fixed?
They're trying.
Yeah.
Who's they? Who's trying?
The Association of Police and.
Association, I mean, all ISA, ICOPA, they're all trying to get this legislation changed.
So basically, we need a legislator to carry a bill and a legislation to pass a bill that reverses that decision.
And it sounds like there's key players that don't want it changed.
I'm sorry?
There's a lot of key players that don't want this changed as far as, there's a real deep story behind why this came about.
And it only applies to misdemeanors. So if the officer didn't witness a felony, but he has probable cause, a felony exists, they can arrest. But misdemeanors, you can't unless he witnesses.
And the real problem kind of arose in case of domestic violence.
Right.
So if you have a misdemeanor, domestic battery that did not occur in the presence of law enforcement, you can't arrest. Or you could separate the parties and incarcerate the suspect, let everybody cool down, and now you can't. You have to go, if you want to arrest, you have to go get a warrant, run it past a judge, you know, that takes time. So it's not a good situation.
No. We've been fighting that battle for the last five years.
Brayden's pulling, we do have ordinances up there, but we're approved when we took the complex over. So if Brayden or Nancy can find those, prosecutors can revisit what those are, what we can prosecute, what we can, and then maybe update that ordinance. And then.
But there need to be penalties with them attached.
I think that fire would be the, there we go.
And then on the speed bumps, and we've talked about this a few times, get smashed fault. Let's, let's get it done this fall. Let's, let's take care of that.
So when I talked to, and again, I talked to Rowdy Evans two years ago about the speed bump issue, the, the concern that he expressed at the time is, is just the schedule that Roden Bridge is under and the amount of asphalt. They buy it at the beginning of the year, if I'm not, is that right, buddy? And then, and then they buy it for the roads. And he said, like, if I can get it done, if I can get up there, we'll, we'll try to get some stuff done. And so I do have a contractor, a private contractor that's come up and has put together a bid for us as well. So, but we'll go whatever direction works. I just know that.
Well, I do, I'm just telling you that it moved up on my list right to the top. So.
Can we include those amounts, sorry, can we include those amounts to be included when we bring me on our projects? And we can find a funding source for those and cameras?
One time.
So next year, I was going to bring up those cameras.
You and I had potentially talked about having those elevated walkways as the speed bump. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
No. So as we, as we went and looked at them, it's just not realistic there.
It's not realistic.
And the other issue is water drainage. Like, the water drainage was a real issue. You have to have that break where, I mean, we could, you could, we could pipe underneath them to allow the gutter, but then you're going to get that clogged and you're going to cause some flooding issues. So really, pulling them away from those walkways is a, is a, is a better issue to allow for drainage down the complex.
Okay.
And even kind of staggering them a little bit. And I think that, you know, long, long-term, there's a lot of stuff that we can do. We've got to identify some no parking zones up there because as you guys have probably witnessed during big events, it is nearly impossible to move through that parking lot. But, and then, and then cameras, you know, really, I think, you know, the kind of the approach that I've been working towards, and it may not feel like I'm working towards this, but this is the approach I'm taking, is first trying to get the officer presence up there. And then to identify those ordinances that we need to, to fill the gap that allow us to actually cite folks for, you know, the, kind of the little things. We do have a lot of people that run dogs off weed up there, but we also have had dogs bite patrons. Right? So, so some of those small things, you know, we could at least give warnings for. And if we have repeat offenders, then we could issue some type of citation, something along those lines that just said here, violation of ordinance. And then, and then really, cameras are reactive tools, right? Cameras help us after the fact to identify. And so an update to the camera system would be, would be phenomenal.
Well, I'd like one at the entrance so you can see the license plate and the person coming in and say, smile, you're on camera. So they know as soon as they drive in that parking lot, they've already been, had a picture taken of them. And then the broader cameras can identify vehicles. Anyway, something like that that says, you want to come visit? Here we go.
I think a lot of the things that I mean, helping, locking facilities at certain times, the speed bumps and a presence, you know. I know we're going back and forth about, about what to do up there, but when we're up there, things don't happen. And that place is such a draw for people. It's what you guys, what it was, you know, what's intended to do. It's draw people there, do, use the facility, and it's never going to change. And I don't, until you get a constant presence up there, it's not going to curb anything, you know, because as much as I'd like to just plant a guy there with current staff, I mean, you can, you know. So the idea is to treat it kind of like our SRO. He's going to be there, that person will be there seasonal and the, and Crowder will identify when those times are the most busiest up there, obviously, probably from May to October or so, and then that person would be general patrol on the off months. So, but his focus would be there, which would be a plus for us because the big events, he would be the go-to contact for all that stuff. So that's kind of the general plan, but I, to really curb what's going on out there, I think, until we have that constant presence and the public knows that there's always someone there, I think it'll change what's going on up there when they know that there's always someone there. So.
Going back to the ordinances, you know, if we need to make ordinances and we need to put penalties, then we just need to know what to do, what you need. So who would, who would be looking at that?
It would be, well, myself and prosecutor as far as what, what type of, you know, deterrent you need up there.
Sounds like we already have some.
Brayden just.
Yeah, who's emailing them to you guys right now?
Yeah, and we could look at them and talk about what we need to add to it or maybe take away.
Or take away.
And then figure out what kind of penalties we want to have in place.
Yeah. Well, I'd be very happy if you had, you tell us what you need, you bring us some recommendations so we can get this done. Sure you'd be happy with that.
Okay. Anything else? No, well, I'll meet with Scott and we can come up with a plan moving forward with some bumps, yeah?
I will agree, man. This has been a lot of vandalism. Reading our daily reports, wellness-centered complex, just this morning, I read last night, and there's more wellness in it, wellness complex, and there's just things that happen up there. So.
And I'd like to reiterate what Commissioner Moser said, that this is a top priority.
All right. Game plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Good.
I was going to go to Melissa. Melissa? Welcome.
Hello.
You want to have a parade?
Yes, please. Well, we don't want to have a parade. We're going to do our traditional 9/11 program on the front steps. So it's not really a parade, but because we block off the road, we have to call it a parade. We have invited the POW MIA to provide their military motorcycle tribute again. I have yet to hear back from them. To be perfectly honest, 9/11 kind of snuck up on me. And I was sitting at home on the 24th of August thinking, what have I forgotten? And all of a sudden, it dawned on me what I had forgotten. So I hurried and sent everything out. So we're kind of behind the eight ball on this, but the city has, what is it called? Just kind of granted our, our permission pending the certificate of liability and the formal parade permit signed by the commission. So we're tentatively scheduled for that.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd move that we authorize signature and support this fantastic program.
Do you have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
And then, right now, we have the proclamation.
Oh, yes.
While you're here, we might as well just go ahead and do that.
Thank you.
Says, whereas on September 11th, 2001, the American people endured the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in the nation's history with courage and heroism. And whereas, in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity, carrying out countless acts of bravery, kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas, community organizations and family members of 9/11 victims began observing an anniversary of September 11th to honor the memory of those who were lost and those who united in response to the tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. And whereas, those who put their lives in harm's way on a daily basis to protect our citizens are deeply appreciated. And whereas, 22 years ago, first responders found themselves in the front lines of war. And whereas, first responders and volunteers sacrificed in service every day for our communities, keeping us all safe and secure. And whereas, on September 11th, 2023, we embrace an opportunity to honor 9/11 victims and heroes on behalf of our community. Now, therefore, we, the Bannock County Commissioners, Ernie Moser, Jeff Huff, and John Crowder, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2023, as Patriot's Day in Bannock County, and we call our citizens attentions to the this observance and appropriate ceremonies to honor the lives of those lost through remembrance and celebration of their dedication to our country.
Thank you.
Motion on that?
Ms. Chair, I move that we accept and sign the proclamation.
Have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you so much, gentlemen. I just want to let you guys know that last year, we did the ceremony in the evening. We had such a huge response to having the community dinner that we've opted to do that again at 5:30 this year. So the ceremony will be at 5:30, and then at 6:30, we'll have a community dinner. Everybody is invited to come, so we hope to see you guys there. And there is a new movement this year from the 9/11 museum and memorial in New York, and it is remembering the sky. And it will be a digital remembrance, and they're asking everybody on all of their social media platforms that they have to take a photograph of the sky from wherever you're at on 9/11 and post it on your social media page and tag the memorial and the museum. We'll get more information out on that. I think it's pretty cool. Would love for Bannock County to lead that in Southeast Idaho. So I'll be working with Emma a little bit on that. I'm, I'm really excited about the opportunity to do something in conjunction that's nationwide versus just here in southeastern Idaho. I think it's great that we do stuff in Bannock County, but that'll give us an option to do something much bigger.
Love it.
Okay. All right. Thanks, guys.
Melissa, do you have, are there particular groups, VSOs, that are preparing the community meal?
Buddy's still out there.
So all of our VSOs locally. So if you'll remember, I'm the liaison between the county and the different veteran service organizations. So there's the American Legion, the VFW, AmVets, all of these are their auxiliaries. So it's not, so in the world of the, of the veteran service organization, there's the men's group and the women's group, or the spouses group. I should say, the veterans group and the spouses group. And so it's the spouses groups that are all coming together. They're called auxiliary.
All of them?
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
It's a fantastic movement here in Bannock County. I'm so happy that those auxiliary units have joined forces because if this really turns out being a fantastic dinner, what I would anticipate happening, like in my heart of hearts, what I want to see happening in, in Bannock County is that that dinner bring us back to the same feeling that happened. I don't know what you guys were thinking on September 12th, but I can remember standing in Alameda Park with people from our community, holding a candle and holding hands. And they were strangers, but we were all together. And it was amazing. And that's what I would like to see at the dinner, is that same kind of feeling come back to us and remind us that we're all one country. I think sometimes we forget that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate you.
Be right. Buddy?
Morning again. Buddy Romrell, Public Works Assistant Director. So we've been working on a project up on the third level to dispose of some old equipment, auction a couple of pieces off. Most of the equipment up there is real old, rundown, snow piles, old equipment from 30, 40-plus years ago. There's a couple items I wanted to note on there, one being that trailer. I was kind of on the fence with whether or not we take that thing to the landfill or to auction because the trailer, the tires are completely rotting out. So just to get it there, we're going to have to put tires on it. Other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward with the packet, I guess.
So on that trailer, you have to look at it. Do you have tires that you could put on it, take off?
I haven't dug into it that far. There's, I can definitely see what we can do. Maybe we can get a couple from the landfill.
I, I would just as soon take it to the landfill. I'd just as soon that doesn't show up on somebody's property in Bannock County and then we end up having a complaint.
An eyesore again.
An eyesore from a neighbor, honestly.
Okay.
I'd like to alleviate that.
Okay.
And everything else, I don't see any problem just going to auction.
Yeah, no. Ms. Chair, I'd move that we authorize the items identified in the packet to go to auction as discussed.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Question two, I'm good to dispose of those items that we chose to also, right? Where they were separated, because the top section of that were items that we're going to dispose of and just take to scrap?
Usually, those items are listed on a resolution, and then the board will sign it.
Yeah.
So if we get that list to Amy, then Amy can do two separate resolu, one resolution, but authorizing just disposal and then the other one for.
At your discretion, or that goes to scrap or.
Okay, good.
Or auction. I mean, it doesn't go to somebody's house.
Awesome.
And are you going through the entire facility in, like even down, you know, by the office, everything?
I'm taking it one step at a time, but that third level is definitely my main priority. We're going to get that cleaned out, throw some gravel up there, add more parking for equipment.
Okay, great.
And so on, so, yeah.
Thanks.
Yep, be right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Let's see where we're at. All right, Dave?
What is Tori? Can we just knock him out real quick?
What was he? I didn't see anything.
Pardon me? Brayden, what's Tori here for? What was Tori here for?
The proclamation for-
It wasn't on my agenda.
No, we're going to sign it today and roundify it Tuesday. That was what I had to talk to you about.
It's not in my agenda. It's not in my packet at all.
All of them.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we enter into executive session under Idaho Code 74-206-1 A and B to consider a person-